In November tenth, twenty twenty-five at seven P M. Please stand before the podium.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Frenchance, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, I'd like to thank the nice crowd that we have here tonight. We're gonna be swearing in our new part-time police officers, and I'm assuming your family and friends. Nice to see you. Thank you for coming. Oh, and approve the agenda. Um, I would like to both please report seventy-six out of the approval or consent agenda and move it down to uh right above ordinance and resolutions. And does anybody else have any other changes they would like to make?
I have a motion to approve the agenda with those changes.
Second, motion has been made and seconded to approve the agenda by moving police report to just the work ordinance and resolutions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And we will move on to the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda and approve the bills of four hundred fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and one dollar and ten cents.
Second, motion has been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda and approve bills of four hundred fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and one dollars and ten cents. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And we will move on to, we'll turn the floor over to Mr. Callan.
Are you, are you here, Your Honor? So, uh, like, uh, Mayor Judy said, we're here to swear in two new part-time officers. Um, Officer Sanger, Officer Elf, would you guys step on up here, please?
Callan.
Alright. Thank you.
Would you raise the audience, please? Is that okay? Alright, uh, I should go this way, this is here. Alright, so. Alright, Mr. Sanger, Mr. Elf, please stand before me and raise your right hand. Alright, please repeat after me. On my honor, I, state your name.
On my honor, I, Matthew Stephen Al.
Will never betray my badge, my integrity, my character, or the public trust.
Will never betray my badge, my integrity, my character, or the public trust.
I will always have the courage to hold myself and others accountable for our actions.
I will always have the courage to hold myself and others accountable for our actions.
I will always uphold the Constitution, the community, and the agency I serve.
I will always uphold the Constitution, the community, and the agency I serve.
Aye, state your name.
Aye.
Matthew Stephen Al.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies foreign and domestic.
You do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I take this obligation freely and without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
That I take this obligation freely and without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties of the office on which I'm about to enter.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties of that office on which I'm about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Alright. Let it hereby be known that on the tenth day of November in the year of twenty twenty-five, Cody Benjamin Sanger and Matthew Stephen Al have affirmed their oath of service. Officer Sanger and Officer Elf have not only become part of the Long Fork family, but part of this community where they now serve. I will not take a moment for family to pin on their badge. Officer Sanger, who would you like to pin on your badge?
Feel free to stick it.
Don't tell her that.
Thank you. Officer Sanger, who would you like to pin on your badge? Oh. Who would you like to pin on your badge?
My grandfather.
Yes, sir. Right, and Elf, pronounce to you, not married. Officers from the City of Osakis, Matthew Elf and Cody Sanger. Your Honor, do you have anything you want to say before you leave?
No. Thanks to have you here. Thank you.
Alright, gentlemen, take your free time. Family, free leave this time. You're welcome to stay. Did you give it a decent chance?
I sure did.
We'll move on to, we have two forty-nine planning zoning. Um, we have the Mets, two hundred, and uh Sourceville has, um, sent over a letter, um, for a new agreement uh for certain things from there. And I will take a stand of motion to approve the Mets.
My motion's approved.
Motion has been made and seconded to, uh, approve planning and zoning Mets from ten, twenty-three, twenty-five. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And then, I'll review the contract from Sourceville. I see there were a couple of minor changes that they made to their contract. I did look, I didn't notice. How long is that in effect for? Does it be yearly?
It, um, it's just an effective until either party decides to make a change or wants to end it three days' notice.
Making motion to approve the shared services agreement?
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve shared services agreement with Sourceville for Community Development Services. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Project sixty dash one. Uh rental ordinance we had discussed at the previous meeting. We sent over planning and zoning. Um, they did not want to proceed with any type of ordinance on the, uh, rental. Um, I, Stephen Sourceville did supply the, the, um, graph of one at planning and zoning. Um, if any of you want to look at that, I have gotten a copy of it. Um, I, I think there will be a discussion for probably a later date if we want to move ahead with anything on that. Um, also, right now, I think we just wanna, then if you want a copy of that graph, we can get that for the handle, correct?
Yeah, so sure, yeah.
And maybe we discuss it after the first year. I think December's gonna be a very busy week, so, um.
It was very nice. It was very laid out for those of you who haven't read it yet. Um, it's very nicely laid out, very nicely worded compared to the one that we were looking at from two thousand nineteen. The other thing that we really discussed is that we really wanna just, at this point in time, stick with our current ordinances. That pretty much everything that we were really talking about and concerned really also fell suits with the city's ordinances. So that is why at this time, we have looked at tabling doing rental ordinance and just stick with what our current ordinances are until something necessarily arises.
Project number twenty-two, clerk, uh, fund balances. Clerk Jacobson has updated the fund balances, and he will give us review of that.
Yeah, I just had a couple of items I wanted to mention. Uh, we have, we're getting close to the end of the year now. Uh, but as you've seen, the fund balances here, just some highlights. Our general fund does have a negative amount in the fund. I anticipate we're getting, um, taxes this month, so I was not gonna make a change on that side of it. Uh, the three hundred fund, which is the E D A, we purchased a lot there, so they chose to keep it in a negative for the time being. Um, until we would sell a lot, if it ends to be a long time before we sell, then we will transfer some money, but right now, we're just leaving it in the negative. Um, you see Park Osaki, um, that's just the funds from doing our engineering. And then we also have the bottom ones, the water treatment plant and the wastewater plant, and that is mainly from the water plant R V funds that we send to them. Now, they're shut down, so they're not reimbursing us any money, um, right now. And then wastewater plant is the engineering that we spent so far on that project. So, we don't have a project put in place yet to get reimbursed that money. It sits in the negative. Uh, the other item is our lateral project for Main Street. That's in a negative of seventeen thousand, and then we do have the liquor store um off sale that does go negative amounts. So, in total, we're still in the black, but all the funds have different various balances, so just wanted to highlight why they are in the negative at this point. Any questions, Your Honor?
Nope, I have none. Come back. And then we proceed to project number eighty-four, the budget. We will plan on adopting that in December. Anthony, you'll keep working on that and update us with any changes to that?
Yes. No, we will have a public hearing on it in December, which we will have two other ones. We just wanted to make sure you guys were aware that that's one hearing we do have in December.
I'm not in touch with what was our due date, correct?
Usual date, and we were holding it here.
Yep. Project number forty-six, water and sewer rates. Uh, Jason Murray from, uh, David Downs Met with Angela has been working on this, and he wanted to explain to us some of the proposed changes on that.
Yeah, um, there's a couple of things that will have items later in our budget or in our agenda here that kind of reflects some of these, but looking at our water rates, we do need to adopt so that we can have those rates in place in January, but, um, looking at both of them, so one of them says water at the top, one says sewer at the top. If you look at them, they look similar, but one's for water, one's for sewer, so, um, on both of them, there's a line item that's called acquisitions or sale of assets. And it's basically kind of a holding item proceeds, yeah, so if you look at, let's say, water, for instance, they have seventy-five thousand dollars in twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven, well, that's the amount for what we anticipate, we're gonna have to pay extra for the water plant, and then also those meters that we're replacing, the batteries on, putting that over the next couple of years to see how it affects our rates. Um, and then the rest of the time, it's at fifty thousand, that's just anticipating if there's any maintenance that we have to do that we would wanna take out of that, uh, fund. And, um, so with those numbers, he's anticipating in twenty-six would be a five percent increase. He's rounding it, so that would be his, we're at thirty-five eighty now, we're going to thirty-seven seventy-five is what he's suggesting, suggesting, and then one thousand to five thousand would go up just twenty-five cents and so on from there, so not a big change on the water side. Um, if you go to the sewer one, um, there's a couple things that play a part in there. We would anticipate we're gonna have this debt from our Main Street main lift station project. And part of that money is to be taken out starting in twenty-seven. You see the fifty-one four. He is suggesting a three dollar increase just to start off to get that amount a little bit higher with the anticipation of having to do this wastewater treatment redo that we're gonna have some engineering costs on it, and we will have to raise some rates just to cover those things instead of doing it all at one time, doing an increase now and then doing an increase later. So that's why that three dollars is in there, um. It shows in that same area of the acquisition sale. Thirty-five thousand is the engineering this year, next year, we're looking at a hundred and sixty-two if we approve that main wastewater treatment engineering. So we wanted to stick it in there so we could see how it would affect the rates to see that we are keeping up with it. As you can see, the fund balances there, they do go down until about twenty-nine, and then they start refupping. So that's why we're saying the three dollars, just to keep it in line and keep our fund balances and still anticipate paying off some of that debt, so, um. The other thing that he did have budgeted in there in twenty-seven was cleaning out one of our storm ponds that we do have, um, kinda on the horizon, that the King Street one that we've been talked about. So, that's in there too, just to reflect, to see where the rates would be if we put all these things in there. So you can see that if we do raise it, we should still be okay. So, um, looking at that, for twenty-six, it would be a total of a twelve percent increase. So right now, we're at twenty-six fifty-five, you'd go to twenty-nine seventy-five, and then each thousand gallons would go up another, what, forty-five cents? So, if the council wants to talk about that, if you feel like it's okay, if you wanna scale it down and say, let's do a dollar fifty this year, and a dollar fifty next year, that may be okay too, so. Just wanted to put it out there, have some discussion about it. And with the, I'll just mention on the wastewater plant that we are gonna talk about later. We're anticipating what the cost of engineering is. Until we get into it, we don't know what the project's gonna be, so I'm not sure how that'll factor, how much grant we could possibly get for that. So that's not included.
And does the decision need to be made tonight, or is it something that we can decide on at our December meeting?
At December, yeah, that's when we set our rates, it's in December, so you can take this information, think about it, we can have discussion. That's when I would want a bullet so that we can have it ready for January to do our bills in January for the rates, so, um. You can sure think about all of it. If you have questions, ask through the month, you can sure ask me.
And I guess just initially, we reflect that the dollar fifty, the dollar fifty might be similarly, you know, a little more powerful for every resident and I mean, we'll look through it and decide at the next month, but initially, that would be where my, that family maybe, I mean, that was thinking it'd be easier for everyone to like, just, but we have to.
And one thing on the front I wanted to mention, as I put on there, that we have received two grants, two. We wrote two grants for Sourceville. One being for replacing some of these water meters, and we did get that for thirty-nine thousand, eight sixty-nine. And then we did get the matching grant of forty thousand for the generator for the water plants. That will help out some of the costs. Both for water.
Then we will move on to, uh, number twenty-four. The liquor store.
Hi. How's it going?
I'm good. So, um, I don't have a comment for you guys. Um, we did, I did purchase the Vikings tickets, um, for the game, which would have been six hundred and twenty-three dollars. As of right now, we've already paid for, um, five hundred and eighteen dollars of that. We've got a balance of a hundred and five dollars, which I foresee being paid here in the next couple of weeks. Um, that didn't come out of any money, I just took care of it myself, 'cause I, the way as the thing was going with the quarter game, I figured we didn't have to pay me back. Instead of issuing a check out, we talked about if there would be a balance, we take care of that for that, but it looks like it's gonna have that paid and then give us a little something for drawings for the Super Bowl, too, so. Um, really good tickets, people are excited about it. It's part of a radio ad that we're running right now to, um, stop in, run the quarter game along with our happy hours, talking about our Sunday game and the fact that it's section one sixteen, row sixteen, you're sixteen feet from the field. So, um, that's going on that. Uh, we do have some radio ads running right now, too, for, um, Veterans Day, just thanking the Mets. I don't even know who that, City of Osakis cares, here, local municipal cares. Um, just saying, just as a thank you. That's gonna run the day before, the day of, or two days before and the day of on Tuesday. So those are gonna run on that. Um, we have, uh, for deer, for the two weekends of deer hunting, I have ads running with Bushlike Hounders on sale, Michael Bloom on sale, and then I have Captain at twenty-one twenty-nine and all of our Spectaculas at twelve twenty-nine. And we also started our, started Vargo and Meat Raffle. Those ads are also running forward. I did ask them to cancel the ad that we were paying for for, um, hiring bartenders. We're kind of where we're at right now. I would like one more part-time person for maybe once or twice a month, and Felicia said she's on, on right now, and she meant it'll also help cover when we end up having one of our bartenders. So we'd be for pregnancy, we've, um, could we leave on that? So I just wanna be prepared for that, so we're not running short and then having to pay the engine over time. Um, the other thing I, uh, I mentioned with Tim and had talked about before is we will be changing tomorrow at, in the morning. We're changing from our C O two tanks supplied by Coca-Cola to a on-demand three hundred pound C O two tank, which would be outside the building. Um, tank doesn't cost us, it's a, uh, fifty-nine dollar a month rental fee and maintenance for them to do that. And then we pay, we're gonna be paying thirty-six cents a pound for our C O two, which we are currently paying two fifty, uh, two ninety-five a pound. So essentially, we're gonna be saving two dollars and fifty-nine cents per pound on that. Not to mention the four or five hundred dollars we're keeping every month and paying a hundred dollar deposit for each of those tanks. My other reason for switching it is we were losing tanks in two days instead of three weeks because we don't have the right seals for our old regulator. Um, and when we were trying to tighten it down, especially some of the gals couldn't get it. You have to really get it tight, and then you have to, and we can't get the washer anymore, the seal anymore for it. So it just seemed like a no-brainer, the fact that we're gonna save a bunch of money. I mean, we're looking, I did some rough figures on it, and we're looking at about two thousand dollars is what we'll save over a year compared to what we're paying. And that's also gonna allow us to have that extra four to five hundred dollars a month to that we're not having, being held up in deposits. So, other than that, um, they're gonna set that up. We'll have an automatic fee go up there when they do the delivery. There's already two other bars in town that are doing, using the same company with the same kind of setup, and it's a twenty-dollar, our twenty-six dollar service charge for when they gotta come fill up. So, we're gonna be probably close to spending a hundred and eight dollars a month versus, I mean, every one of the tanks costs us fifty-two dollars for the C O two inside. We're doing four of those, we're doing three to four of those in a month. With that and the C O two at the bottom, so that'd be hooked up tomorrow around lunchtime, we'll be moving with it moving forward.
Um, I see we didn't get a gambling report for, uh, over. Does it run a month behind?
They usually run a month behind, just from when he picks up, when he gets the numbers.
Okay.
That will be at the next meeting.
And then I see you're requesting approval to hire Riley Nicol as a part-time bartender?
Yep, she's been, already been working, but yeah, that's, she was hired when, in that meantime, when we were in the last week, so. And we did approve a lot of it, that's been going well, too, so.
Well, I got motion to approve, right, and they're going, um, first time, going to fourteen, are we?
I'll sign that.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve hiring Riley Nicol as a part-time bartender at forty-three dollars an hour, starting after the first. All in a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And then the blue deck? That's all I have.
No.
And thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then for you, me, when you guys, I did, too.
Aye.
Let's go, some, um, some, um, speech. Um.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, we'll move on to, uh, the fire department fire relief.
See that copy of our resolution there?
Yes, sir.
For our release to bring that from
fifty-six hundred, sixty-six hundred.
That will put us at ninety-nine point, I said ninety-nine point six percent funded, isn't it?
Yeah, that's what we discussed last week.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the benefits going up to sixty-six hundred. Okay.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve resolution twenty, twenty-five dash twenty-eight to approve the twenty-twenty-six benefit level for the Osakis fire relief to go to sixty-six hundred dollars. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And then I understand that you have received, we received some money.
Yep.
From the Fire Department Relief Association, they're asking if that goes directly to the Pira.
That gets deposited, we make a check to the city, and then the city sends that over to Pira. So.
Make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve twenty-five thousand dollars from the Fire Department Relief Association go directly into the fire, fire relief fund at Pira. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Looks like you had a busy October.
It was okay, I mean, we had three, three car accidents, a mutual aid with sock center and shed fire. Um, sock center is back up on their water tower now, they were down for maintenance. So I've got our one tanker, we have a velvet staff, and we get that possibly this weekend, it might actually come up. And it'll be out for probably a week or a little more, just depends. He's gotta assemble a whole pump assembly of a truck to get that one valve. So that'll just run down to Wilmer to can them pumps. Um, we had a brush fire, did have our new water go out, we actually sprayed a little bit of water with it and that. So it's kind of a nice way, it'd be nice to, not that we want to fire, but it'd be nice to use a little bit more, you know, but what we had out there worked really good, so. Then we just had a power line down a couple of weeks ago over on Lake Street at four in the morning, so I assumed bigger truck come through and ripped it off side of the house. So. And then fire prevention on here, goes back to me, in October, we served two hundred and fifty people. I would say there's probably three hundred or so in there. Um, and then Fire Chiefs Convention, myself and Alan went up there, went to some classes, he went to some of our info reporting classes for all of our reports that turned over to the state, he went to that. Um, 'cause they're changing their system a little bit. And then I went to a couple with, uh, State Farm Marshal's Office, and then, uh, took a class with, um, the state on emergency management stuff, and like how you'd handle that, and I gotta give it to you sometime, and Andrew would go over some of that, and you know, talked about, in the event of a disaster at two in the morning, should I call you or should I just call shots?
Yeah.
So I wanna get you guys and put something in place, you know.
And, yes, in fact, I had a, a meeting with Julie Nyberg.
Okay, yep.
Um, so, yeah, I would like to get together to do two.
You know, so we'll set something up here about next month or two and just. You know, so we'll set something up here about next month or two and just figure out what I do come into the year. You know, something we've never really crossed and never had to, have, you don't think about it, and it's so close to home and they had a good point, you know.
Yeah.
So, yeah, no, other than that, it's been, been good, so.
Sounds good.
Any questions?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Project number ninety-seven, water user construction invoice twenty-one for um total of twenty-eight thousand, twenty-eight dollars and fifty cents.
Oh.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve user construction invoice number twenty-one for twenty-eight thousand, twenty-eight dollars and fifty cents. All in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And then that's what you were discussing earlier, um as far as the balance of the eighteen thousand. We're waiting for the government to start with.
Yeah, what's a, well, the amount that we approved now, twenty-eight, twenty-eight, we are not going to get those funds from them until they're backed up. So if we pay it, we don't have the funds for reverse. But, and last month's also. We, we pay it, but we don't get the funds from them. Because they're not open, so I just wanted you to know that, that's why partly it's in the hole as much as it is.
Okay, thank you.
I thought that was just with the city of stuff.
Correct.
What's that?
It's fund balance with the city.
The city is not, no, the fund is. Well, on that one, I did add, sorry, to change order. And I had sent over an email I got after a meeting, just this one that changed the date on the water plant final. Slight work, but it was no, there was no fee change, it was just the time change. So that was, it's change number four that I sent over.
Okay.
Um so we just need approval on that too.
I'll make a motion to approve the change order number zero-zero-four.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve change orders for new construction number zero-zero-four. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Hello, project number forty-nine, the main lift station. October meeting, we approved um contractor Kilmer for the main lift. And Angela has given us some numbers here, so the total project finance right now is seven-hundred-and-sixty-thousand, two-hundred-and-sixteen dollars. Um we really don't need to do anything with this right now because in December we'll receive a bond estimate.
Right, and that's when you have to make an approval, yes. But that's what we're looking to ask for. We just need approval of the invoice for NUDIS.
Oh, yeah, I'm gonna do that on the next, um.
Yeah.
Okay, then we'll go over here to project number forty-nine, the main street lateral lining project. Kevin, who are you to give us some insight?
Yeah, we have some needs at least.
You can.
I, I live on the corner, so I still have a road that, so I'm okay with that.
Um so we have the lateral lining or lateral services reviewed for Main Street. And then most of the ones on Pike Street, there's a couple that we're still missing. The other ones are still working with the lining or the televising company to get. Um these are Main Street. Basically, they're in such terrible condition, almost every single um televising had to be abandoned because they ran into trucks or pipe was so far offset that they couldn't get them or whatever it may be. Um this is not a good candidate for lining. So uh we do have some like drawings sketched up for Pike Street as well. Pike Street, we might be able to get away with some more lining, um. We're still kind of analyzing that one to see if there's other items there that need to be addressed besides just the sanitary sewer. Um so pipe is still not in fantastic shape over there either and it derates the services, but they're better than Main Street. Um but that's kind of where we're at right now. We'll keep working on the Main Street side of things and try to get like a cost, a little bit better of a cost estimate put together. I should come up with a little copies, but if you want bigger copies, I'll leave those here as well for both of them. Um but yeah, basically on Main Street, you're looking at a full reconstruct of all the streets. Um right now, we are throwing like the side streets of fourth, fifth, sixth and seventh. Um part of that is the water pipe isn't that necessary. Best in those areas, the storm pipes aren't that great in those areas. Um and some of those homes are running underneath the neighbors and into Main Street and not actually out towards it should be going. So um lots of fun stuff on Main Street. Any questions on those specifically?
So when we look at this Main Street one, I am very agreeing to this. Does this mean that we literally are ripping up the entire road and running correct services? Okay, is this a project that we do all at once? Or is it something we kind of start on the left side and work to the right, something like that?
So like sixth, that would be kind of your breaking point there, you kind of see where the gap of the sanitary sewer is there.
Yes.
So you could split that into two projects if you'd like. Um and that would be kind of like the easier break point. So we can look at, you know, splitting it from that angle. Um and see where we end up as far as dollar value. You can kind of, we can whale things around and see what areas we have to do as. You know, I wouldn't do anything smaller than half of the project at a time. Just dollar value wise, it doesn't make sense for contractors to mobilize that all the equipment and a lot of folks are not getting very happy when they get their stuff all ripped up and they're ripped back to it a couple years later, but.
How does this look? So when we go through and we start ripping up stuff, I'm assuming we have to shut off pretty much everything to the residence homes. Will they be hooked back up at night to still be able to use all their water and things like?
Yeah, so water will always be hooked up. It'll actually create a temporary system that's around. So your water will be a little bit warmer, so people get a little feisty about that. But that's about the worst case scenario. Your pressures might not be as great in your upstairs bathroom, but that's kind of the main items there. Um so you would see like, you know, hypothetically, if we're giving this area over here, there'll be a temporary line laying up here, here, here.
Okay.
In the yards, and those will just connect up to your faucet outside and go back feed your water back in. So you always have water. The sanitary, we ask the residents to try to avoid daytime use. Um but basically, on those, don't plug them up wherever we end up. The, wherever we end up tying on to, um and that would be kind of the other topic of conversation that you guys can kind of start mulling over on your own is how far do we want to go with these services? We know they're all terrible. Do we want to try to do something joint with residents to try to get the entire line redone? Or do we just want to stop where we're stopping, create a separate list for them to try to do it on their own? Um those are all topics for you guys to kind of consider as we start going through this process too. Um currently, you guys are basically making everyone redo them if they try to sell their house. Every single house in this area, if they try to sell it after redoing their sanitary service. I don't think there's one that's.
Do you know, Kevin, we talked about this, can the city do it and assess them? Do you know, because it's private or have you not found?
Um everyone, I would lean into your attorney for that question. Um Adrian Tenny's a little bit different. There are definitely cities that have done it all the way up to the house, assessed the project. Um you guys can easily claim that you have a benefit by redoing everyone's service all the way up to their house by cutting down on your water that you're shooting at the plant. So um you guys can prove a public good. It's just a matter of how much of that do you want to assess or do you guys wanna try to help in those? Or is that a hundred percent assessment? Um some of these assessment numbers might be very hefty.
And what are you saying is we're gonna do the main, but the laterals that go into people's houses are in poor shape too.
Yeah.
And it doesn't really serve a purpose to fix the main when the line's still.
Most of your, yeah, most of your problems are actually services most likely not actually from your main line. It's like, yes, we can replace our main line and that would be great. We check a box with the MPCA, but we're not actually fixing where the problems are.
So obviously, it is beneficial for our residents to fix their line during this same time since everything is dug up. Is it, is it something that we can do? Like if you do this at the same time, are we able to give them a discount? And I don't know how that necessarily works, um.
Those are all the things that you guys are.
Okay.
We will end up having those conversations. Um I don't want to get too far into those.
No, that's fine.
At this point, just because we will have to have like you guys' attorney chime in on those items too.
Perfect.
Um but yes, that's exactly what I'm kind of getting at tonight is on those services, do we want to say this is a hundred percent resident-owned? Here's your bill of seven thousand dollars just for the service plus your fifty percent of the main and water main and the street and storm. And now we're up to a fifty thousand dollar assessment. I don't know if that's actually how much, but we're, we might be looking at a percent.
So on your fourth, fifth, sixth, are the water and storm mains running down each one of those streets? Even though we don't all have hoses all the way down them?
So like sixth, we could, we could look at removing during sixth. Um we have that highlighting, but that we wouldn't necessarily have to do sixth. We'd have to do sixth, the north to Lake Street if we wanted to fix the storm water in there. Um but as of right now, I do not think we need, or there wouldn't be any need for sanitary on that stretch.
I was just thinking, you know, a lot of, if you guys drive over there, a lot of houses are one or two on that whole street, there's not a lot to. A lot of main all the way down is a lot of cost. However, we do want to have them hook up to a main rather than going through somebody's yard. So to secretly get them, you know, have a smaller main or one that just connects to your house if it has to loop. I mean, that's something you'd have to save. Water has to loop in some areas or if it's okay, if it does, just go to one home?
Yeah, water is always tricky, we can dead-end it. That would be more of a preference. Um we can just run it dead-end though and it'll be okay. Like right now, we kind of show a dead-end on fifth and seventh. Um.
Okay.
And then fourth and sixth would be do, which I think that's actually what's pretty, you know, there as well. So we're kind of maintaining the water system and just be improving the sanitary. And we can, like, this is obviously very, very preliminary layouts. Like these will get refined quite a bit, but um wanted to share. Wanted to give you guys an update if we weren't just hiding in the background, not doing anything, so.
So isn't something like maybe after the first of the year, we should do like a workshop and actually get a little more fine tuning of
Yeah.
cost, what we're looking at doing, that kind of thing. Yeah, there's, there's a lot of moving parts and a lot of colors on this.
Yeah, and a lot of cost. Yeah, by, I would say January will for sure have Main Street ready and Pike. The other two might be a little bit further along. This is by far your number one priority, so I'm not as worried about the other areas. If those kind of lay along with the process, that's, that's just fine. Um but I will work to make sure we have a cost estimate and I'll spend some more time refining this with city staff as well. Um so we have a more finalized layout by January. So we can kind of meet then, I assume everyone, December is chaos, so you guys try to move on that.
Can't imagine why we'd be bad.
And what's the cost, you have a cost for private section, a little broader idea?
Yeah, so I'll try to do, what I'll end up trying to do is I'll calculate all the main costs. I'll draw an estimate, I'll talk to a couple contractors that I work with well. Try to get an idea of like what would you make us to go from where we usually stop to the rest of the house. Try to get some numbers on that too. So you can kind of have a overall picture of what residents are going on with.
And Angela, would a dollar more be more beneficial for you talking with the firm versus just kind of a generic conversation with the attorney?
No, I'm just looking for a legal allowance. Typically, you can assess based on, you know, your public street and that. But then when you're going on private, you're going and repairing somebody's private property. And typically, it's like you're not supposed to do that. You're not supposed to finance somebody else and borrow money on their behalf, but that's why I said, well, with this project can we, because of the need? And we might just have to find out if we can.
Yeah. Yeah, so a lot of, it, you know, heavily depend on like how much we can justify it, which in this case, we can pretty easily justify it as soon as we show any one of the service videos. Um but yeah, it's always best practice just to bring the attorney in on these ones just because it is kind of a unique situation. Um but it also is very dependent on your ordinances as well. So I believe you guys, the resident holds up to the main, correct? Yeah, so like technically, their ownership ends right at our pipe. So, you know, realistically, no matter how we tie into it, we're gonna be doing some level of an improvement on a private line, no matter how you do it. Because to dig a hole deep enough to replace a pipe, we have to replace the service pipes. Generally speaking, that's always allowed up to the right-of-way line. Um but there's extenuating circumstances, you can extend that all the way up to the house. Any other questions, questions?
Am I gonna copy that, Kevin, or?
Which one?
One, read that out there.
I can make all of it.
You can email it or you can give me all of it or.
I'll share these, these are the, they're not pretty, but I'll share them with you guys anyways. We'll make them look nicer by the time we have, we have like public, public viewing, this will be private, private moments. Try to make something look a little prettier like this and put on your boxes on the sheet of paper, but.
You're welcome.
But I'll get these sent over to you, you should have these too, but I'll get these sent over too. Anything else? Also, I'll, my, I didn't know if you're doing something, you want to get your copies, if you want to share.
Not me.
Yeah.
I'm gonna want them to approve the invoice for WSD.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve WSD invoice for four thousand five hundred seventy-nine dollars and fifty cents. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Project number four-four-four dash four-point-nine, waste water project ININ slash MPCA.
So this, this is the one I was talking about.
The extension.
Earlier, yeah. The extension, part of what Kevin threw in there is that Main Street improvement bidding and construction was highlighted in there. So that's part of our compliance timeframe that we're looking to comply with this MPCA. So I did put on the table when you got here tonight, the little contract we have with them, that's the compliance agreement. And if you look under part thirteen, so there's three papers I have for you, part thirteen is an extension of schedule. And in there, it just says that you have to. in there, it just says that you have to request an extension in writing, have to get approval. Reasons for an extension would be circumstances beyond the reasonable control of the regulated party. And delays caused by the M P C reviewing or timely submissions or requesting of the agreement or regulate regulated party submissions in complete and approved forms. Um, which may make it not feasible for the regulated party to meet and question. So says good cause to not include anticipated costs. Increases in the cost of control equipment or delays in MPCA reviewing of submissions when the signals are not incomplete and approved form. So when we're talking about how can we handle this, we have to have a reason outside of cost that we can't meet their deadline. With that being said, I'm not a hundred percent sure we have any good reason other than just the timeframe of trying to do all this at one time. I was talking to Judy about doing the main lift station, doing these meters, trying to finish the water plant and doing this main, then you're trying to do this wastewater. It's just the time and the day to accomplish everything. Even if you have other people working on it, you still have staff working on it. That would be the only thing that is daunting about all of it at one time. And mostly the water plant will be done soon, but when you agreed to this five years ago, you don't know all these things are also gonna be in.
And the water plant, all that all ties back into this same thing, right?
It is not part of the MPCA's agreement at all, no. We didn't anticipate that taking as long as it has either. And then these water meters things, replacing all the batteries on them, that only started a year and a half ago and it's kind of snowballed from there to having to replace that. So the guys spend time on that. So other than time and trying to manage all this, the cost is the other thing, which sounds like cost is really not, they don't really care. Which is why the rates need to be higher. And I did talk to Kevin from the MPCA in a lengthy discussion about it and he said, well, according to the rules or the rates that you should be at forty two dollars per person on your sewer and you're at twenty four. So he's saying we're not charging enough. So if you say you don't have enough money, you should be charged more. So I really don't have any grace for you not having enough um funds. So
So is that based on a city our size that we should be charging forty?
Well, they look at your the median income for the area. So like Douglas Town and they look at the percentage of your income that you should go pay for you know, water and sewer and they go off this rate schedule that's created by the state.
Oh goodness.
Yes.
Wow.
And that's just sewer, so not not water. But it does add up. Yeah, I did tell them, well, I have been around the block and it's not just the rates on their water bill. It's the rates on all the debt that we have too, the people that forty two dollars. It's not just what you send you want. So it is everything, but we're we're not probably there either. So we're not at forty two. Um, so with that being said, unless you guys feel like you want us to try to do an extension, my thought would be you know, approve this in this water wastewater um approval for Nero and we had a rate schedule in there. So you go to have a kickoff meeting, a preliminary design and a final design. Then once you get to the final design, you can submit it to the MPCA and ask for funding and then see if we get funding from them. And then you could do the other two. Because we're supposed to be high on the list for grants, so the issue with grants is they're gonna say, we're gonna grant you money. However, you need to be taking this much from your residents, which has to equal the forty two dollars. I guarantee you that's what they're gonna say. They're gonna say you have to be at a certain rate in order for it to be feasible. And then if you have costs above that, it would be granted.
Is that a going forward rate or is it like a one time rate?
Going forward. And so you have to have, and it's like I said, it's your water bill. It's like this main lift station now, it's this sewer that so if you quantify that to every person in town, how much more is that per month on their household bill and then that adds up to this forty two. But they will they will ask that you increase. That's why I said the rate schedule earlier is you increase it a little bit and a little bit, but they're gonna want you to increase it more. It's a big jump. Try to think you're gonna do it one time. So doing a little bit at a time. You have this other debt on there. That'll add up some money too. I don't have a total for you because I don't know what the water plant will even be or the wastewater plant, I should say.
And most other grants would also require a lot of same, if all that same dollar value. So like even if you prefer rural development, they would require your water zones to be or your sewer build up both to be that same concept. They won't give you a grant money. They might give you a loan, but they won't give you grant funding unless gratels and grants usually. Yeah.
Is that something we have to have a public hearing on if we are increasing that much? Or is that something we can
I don't know that you're obligated, but I think it's always dressed in poster hearings or rate changes because then people can
Well, I'm just thinking that.
Staff and I appreciate it too.
Bring your light on the top.
There you go, there you go. Well, I I also think in economy, it it really goes back to information. You know, we are getting all this information and unless you're really sitting here or watching it, our community is not gonna get the information.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Because yeah, that's that's a lot to take in and it's a lot that we need to have to honor.
Yeah, because is there any way we can even meet? What we've got highlighted on the street right now?
How can what?
Can we meet these this design sewer main improvements? And they're telling us to have that done by January of twenty twenty six?
Kevin?
Well, I was I was basically I I don't
He's saying what's not designed.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't know what the fixing is, but
Yeah, we're gonna bid it. It's saying we're gonna bid it February to March of twenty six. And we're gonna construct it in April to November of twenty six.
Uh, we could do like the Main Street area, but you're not gonna want to do. I mean, one financially, there's no way we I can't imagine you have to be able to watch your sweat doing all of the life ones. But no. If that is something we want to push forward on Main Street to try and be closer to that, we know, but
And do you think they would be satisfied with just Main Streets?
They're saying that while the Main Street is the highlighted thing because that's the issued areas and they asked basically staff to identify the areas in town they feel were the most detrimental to I N I. And then it was Main Street and a few of these other ones that were identified now.
And with Kevin's thing, it sounds like Main Street is the worst. So you are tackling the the worst thing.
You gotta do it in steps and I think they understand that, but to do nothing is not an answer for them.
You could also look at fibbing a little bit and say that the other areas based off the televising were not as detrimental as far as infiltration goes.
Okay.
Which they truly aren't. Like even Main Street, a lot of it is rust, which you know most of those trees are sucking moisture out. Not that it like that is an answer, but.
The other thing they the highlighted areas, if you look at the one above televising sewer service laterals was supposed to be done this summer. We don't have it. And the part of it, when I talked to him about it, it was, well, you should have those done. That's you just hire somebody, have them do it. It's like, well, that's a lot of money. Well, money isn't a factor.
Yeah.
It's an enforcement thing. So what if we identified thirty of them need to be done? Well, then it's you guys need to enforce that they need to do it. You need to tell them to do it or they're getting charged for having this I N I. But he wants everybody to be have lateral lines inspected and then if they are not compliant, they need to repair it within the timeframe and we should be enforcing that. Which is the ordinance that we did adopt to do lateral inspections. So we have been doing them on anybody that's sold has to have them done. Now, we've only done the ones with their projects so far. We haven't done above beyond that at this point. So it's another cost.
And there is some time limiting factors on you know, Johnson Jetline side of things too of they have that you're not the only city that they're working in too, but it has been a little bit challenging to try and get all the lateral televised. They do take longer and are more of an inconvenience for sure. In other words, to appease the MPCA, we do have to kind of move forward in some some fashion.
Yeah, either that or we have to ask for this extension of time.
I was gonna say, like you say.
My own, like I said, my own thing would be tackling all these things at one time. It gets to be a lot, but they'll say, well, we can hire a consultant, we can hire a person to televise. You're not doing it yourself. It's just an enforcement thing. That's what I feel like the answer would be. That's the only item I feel like would qualify for an extension of the schedule.
If we do an extension, how long will it take them to get back to us? Is it pretty prompt?
In the past, no.
Okay.
I would say that we can ask for it, but it's months before you hear.
So it's we still need to keep moving forward even if we try to file an extension?
I would say that they might deny an extension pretty quickly.
Okay.
Okay.
If you were to seek like trying to bid this project and say we want it until May so we can have a couple more public here and like neighborhood meetings and stuff like that, and we're still looking at doing construction in twenty twenty six, I don't see them necessarily pushing back on something like that.
Okay.
But if you're looking at pumping this whole project into twenty twenty seven, I could see them.
Kick it back out?
They would just
Okay.
They might email you back within the minute and say deny, so. If it's a, you know, if they're just trying, if they see you're trying to genuinely make an effort and you're just looking at extending your bidding season, I mean it's not a common bid, but twenty twenty six project in April or even May. So. But if we wanna go forward with that, you know, like next month and go get hammering on where this is like final plans ready to rock and roll and pretty
Well, so even though we're getting bidding out and going to make how soon I mean, Kevin put it off to tell January to tell you to rock and roll with the final plans.
December would be a little later if we could do that. But yeah, I mean, if if we got the go ahead and just like next month, we'll make it happen.
Is that something we do now versus December? Since it needs to be done anyway?
I I was gonna say, how do you, I I mean, we haven't we're on timeframe now. How do we put it off for another month or two? We almost have to move so forward somehow. Whether it be then the first step would be getting the design, right?
Yeah, designing it and then bidding it.
Yep.
And then from there, we'll have to figure out financials, but.
Well, typically, like you told Kevin, we have an assessment policy. What we've done in the city is they'll get their prices, they'll apply our assessment policy to it. We have prices for each property. We would have an initial public hearing so they can see those amounts. Usually we've never changed those. We're not gonna say it's twenty thousand dollars and oh, I guess it's thirty. Maybe if it's fifteen, well, but we're never gonna go up. So whatever we say that we we're kind of kept it to whether the project changed or not. But we're required to have hearings if we are gonna assess. There's a state statute requires us to go through the steps, so. We would want to have a hearing and then call for the project and bid. So it is a process of meetings we're gonna have to have to get it done.
And these even have the potential that we might have to have a conversation. So can we justify or can we truly justify our assessments too? Because we do have to we have to show a benefit to those properties of whatever dollar value you're assessing and some of these might be challenging. Do that on depending on how big they get.
So for the sake of time, is it something we need to discuss this at a workshop versus a council meeting? And kind of go in through some of the nitty gritty? Maybe we can hear what the attorney says at that point. Touch base with you as timeline of, okay, this is where we really need to look at everything. And at that point, if we need to have a public hearing, we can do something early January? Is that
I think it's tough, Kevin, you going forward on this thing and get it as soon as you can. Because why why would they say two more months
Is that possible?
Yeah, that would be nice. Yeah.
For this part of the project and we just get a hold.
If if we design it now, even if we don't do anything with it, it can stay on the shelf for three, four, five years and it's still gonna dust it off, bid it, send it out of your work. That's most worth.
Yeah, I think we need to keep only just not putting hold on this project. Regardless, we're gonna have to
Yes.
go forward in some way, shape or form. So.
And then I mean, if they get feisty about the other areas that city staff has identified, at least at that point, we can say, you know, this is what we're able to tackle and right now and we'll keep working on the rest of it too. You know, you're showing a effort, which is
And I was gonna say, and you're
Typically have that.
You're looking at the worst part of talent right now.
Yeah.
So yes, I I think that I agree with Laura that I think we need to
Do you want to motion on that?
Move move forward to design.
We were uh, have we give you approval for final?
Not approval for final. This is just like preliminary approval.
And I'm sure there'll be an extra cost for that. You know? So uh, I mean, we can definitely say we're gonna go forward, but I think you need to give us a
Well, I was gonna say, do you want to do like a tentative? What I'll do is I'm gonna take I'll I'll focus more energy on this specific area as part of our preliminary design. And keep moving this closer to like final design. And underneath that, I'll bring you a new proposal for this final design and then I'll kind of
And then we could we could approve that up at the December meeting. I mean, that'll take just a minute to do.
Yeah. Yeah.
And you're just knowing we're and we're encouraging you to move forward.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we'll make, yeah, we'll make it work. So.
Okay. Then we'll do that.
The neighborhood meeting is scheduled to like on August one, right?
Okay.
Not funny.
You can start knocking like what's
So you you want me to give you a little history lesson? The first public hearing I had, what I started here was Reggie wanted to do a Main Street, sixth, fifth, fourth. That's the project he wanted done. And the council got a lot of flack and they said, no. We're not wearing here today.
Almost like
Twenty years later.
Yeah.
Twenty years ago, we should have done it. It would have been a lot cheaper. It wouldn't be in this predicament.
Yeah, the people that didn't want it, yeah.
How many of the same residents are gonna show up to this one?
Well, the ones that were biggest fazers aren't there anymore, so that's
I mean, nobody wants to pay extra money. I mean, nobody wants to pay extra money off forward. But that's just what happens when you live, you, things need to be maintained and sorry, but not sorry. Like we have to continue to provide.
I was gonna say, if Reggie was talking about twenty seven years ago, it was old then.
Right. Yeah. Oh, wow. Yeah. Yeah.
So.
I'm more kicking the can on this one.
So it's bigger.
Yeah. Okay, we'll just have you.
I'll move forward. Yeah, I'll get you guys a formal proposal, but.
Yeah, that's good. We might see some pot in November.
Okay. Um, when Angela spoke with the MPCA, they also asked that we appoint a point person to discuss the timeline, issues, agreement, or any other means um with this project. Cause the past point person was Greg Gottwald.
So I wanna, I wanna say something that jury finally made. If you look at section fourteen, this is a case contacted and it mentioned to myself and Greg. Now, he was saying like I, he kind of gave me some flack like, I should just be talking to the point person that you went with. Well. It sounded like good talk to you. They need, they need to appoint you as the point person. Anyways, I'm on there, but Greg is obviously no longer here. So I think that should be, yeah. So we just need some approval from the council.
I'll make a motion to move on the list. Darren, as the another point person second.
Motion is made and seconded to appoint Darren Christorf as point person to the MPCA. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Project one oh two EDA, um, we need to approve the minutes from the October meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion is made and seconded to approve the EDA minutes from the meeting of October twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Um, we have also, the City of Osakers has also received the Minnesota Housing Infrastructure Grant for four hundred eighty thousand dollars. Uh, this is a grant that Cliff Jacobson worked with Laura at Bowling to submit. Um, he attached the award letter for us. And this grant is gonna help reduce costs per lot for our new development. Uh, the EBA has motion to move forward with purchase of grid acres land located off of Main Street. So that's kind of where we're thinking to use this money. So. All the hard work Angela's put in on grants lately has, is coming to fruition. Thank you for that. I take care of it. Alright. Um, project number three twelve, notification team, there are no updates there.
Um, Amber just wanted to mention their fundraiser will be coming up in February, which is at Kirkland Willow. Um, Deck Gates party with a band, Zee Boots to the Deck Gates, sixty dollars a ticket. Um, and that all goes towards they work really hard at the beach. They've done projects at Purple Sagi and I think they're hoping that maybe doing some good things down at Central Park. So.
That's a good thing. They've done wonderful things.
If, do you have any updates that?
February twenty first.
Thank you.
One more update next month.
Project number four forty one, park meeting. Um, we have to approve the minutes from the October twenty eighth meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second. Motion is made and seconded to approve minutes from October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five park um meeting. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And then they're moving their hand. They're looking at designs for the splash pad, um, and asking for more uh more features to be added to that to see what our actual dollars would, would be on that. Uh, the bike share program. I think it's being used, isn't it?
Mm-hmm.
Beautiful thing.
Yeah.
So, and the senior banners are gonna start coming up in November. Darren is planning on leaving up Osakers banners on the empty poles and having seniors, I think, wear downtown here. So. Um, there is also a bill for us to approve for WSB.
Motion to approve the WSB for four thousand six hundred seventy two dollars. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve WSB invoice for park construction engineering for four thousand six hundred seventy two dollars. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And I do have one more thing. Um, we packed it, a contract amendment to to depart the final design part of that park, Osagi. Uh, we did get this at a park meeting. Um. It's adding another thirty four thousand four hundred twenty five dollars onto the project in order to finish up the design for bidding this spring. And I did apply for a consultant reimbursement on it and it was approved for that. So we will be getting fifteen thousand dollars towards that.
Perfect. Thank you. Please you know, approve that contract change. Motion is made and seconded to approve number four four one WSB contract change. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Open floor, anyone here with like two, um, bring forth items for the council to consider for this meeting?
Um, yeah.
Pick one up here, please.
Yes, you get to be on the camera.
Yeah. Get warmed up, Stephen.
So, you know, I, I haven't been to um many of the recent meetings, but I have kind of followed it in the paper and then just kind of seeing where and some of the mailing stuff and website stuff around, um, the changes around snow. And so I live at the corner of, um, First Avenue East and Oak Street. So I have quite a long stretch that has no bollard in it. I'm right across from the high school parking lot. Um, and so, you know, just thinking about all that's worded. I mean, I, I, I hundred percent agree that the sidewalks need to be cleared. I just wanna make sure, you know, that's, that's what I understood, like sidewalks need to be cleared. But, you know, when there's no bollard there, you know, you've got forty, fifty feet of street. But eventually, you know, half of that ends up on the sidewalk. And it is wet, heavy snow and, and a residential snow blower struggles so hard to get through that and you end up with so much ice in there. I, I just, I, I wish you guys could find a way to get the, the city guys to consistently, you know, I mean, if there's more than two inches or more than three inches of snowfall to come through with their commercial blower, blow that, put it in the back of a truck like they have done at times in the past. Um, it makes it so much better. Um, you know, I mean, it used to be done a lot. I mean, I've lived in my house for fifteen years now. It used to be done a lot more consistently. You never knew for sure when they were coming, but you know. Um, I, I've gone through several snow blowers where they, they just don't, they hate that wet, heavy snow that, you know, I mean, if we get three inches of snow on the road, by the time that gets pushed up, that's a, that's like a foot, you know, and it multiplies by three or four times. Um, and so it, it really makes it tough for, I mean, I, I'm on a corner. So pulling through where there's, you know, like grass bollard, like it's nothing. And then you get out, you go to make that corner out there and you know, it's a workout to try to get through all that snow. And so, um, and especially, you know, looking at a twenty four hour window. Um, you know, just depending on when that snowfall ends.
It ends, it's not gonna be like, to admit, I mean.
I, I, I understand, but it's just.
You know, we're gonna have to give a little leeway. Um, it's gonna be a new thing for all of us.
Yeah.
Okay. I understand where you're coming from. But then I, I don't have, my city guys don't have enough time to get all this stuff done either. You know, if, if they're gonna take care of, right now they've got it that and correct me if I'm wrong, Angela, they've got it that they can pretty much do everything, the streets in an eight hour window. So if I haven't started doing that corner, what other corners do I have to have to do? And then I'm looking at overtime. So it's, it's a, it's no win situation for any of us, you know?
But yeah, I mean, you know, it's, you know, I mean, there's just very, very select streets that, you know, there's no bollard there. I mean, First Avenue East, Main Street, we're not seeing street culminates, you know, um, but I just it, it, it's tough. And I mean, you know, they've done it in the past. I mean, I don't know whether that was paying overtime. You know, I mean, you know, you guys had more, more city crew than what you did then. And so that's where, I mean, I mean, my, my uncle, I don't know if you know who my uncle was.
No.
My uncle was Reggie.
Was it Reggie?
Yeah. So I mean, you know, they generally work with the, you know, probably two full time and one part time. And I mean, they did an amazing job. I mean, you know. So I mean, you know, I, I just look at like, you know, it's, it's just gonna be, you know, when I, when I see, I mean, and I, you know, I think like wording's been great of, you know, kind of, you know, yeah, to get it done. And I agree, it should be done. But I mean, and, and it's, it's very discouraging on the other side too of where like I do mine and like nobody else does it down block and you're going to lie, lie, lie of working my butt off to, you know. You know, because the rest of the sidewalks untouched for, for weeks. So is that something you guys are going to push forward with? You know, hiring somebody to get it done and making them pay if they don't do it? I mean, that's.
Yes.
Nice. And because yeah, it's been a lot of years that, you know, I mean, even when the, when the seventy two hour was being enforced, like, I mean, you know, I watch several houses not, not do anything on winter lawn.
Yeah. Yeah, I know. It will be, it will be enforced. Is it gonna be down to the twenty four hour window? I, it's gonna be close, but there's a little bit of leeway there. I mean, we understand where you're coming from. I, I, I hear you.
No.
I don't, I, I fortunately live on a street where I don't have a sidewalk. But I know what it's like at the end of the driveway.
Yeah.
So I, I know where you're coming from.
But it, yeah, it's, you know. If, if, you know, the end of a driveway, you can go in and out of it, you know, versus that sidewalk, you gotta go all the way along it and it's it, it's become extremely difficult. And that's where, that's where the, from what I understood, the, the relaxed ordinance on that was like somebody, you know, elderly was not able to do it, you know, that like there, there were kind of ones that came in and complained and said, we can't, we can't physically do this, you know, but and so, yeah, I just, just trying to understand that a little bit better because I just don't see where, you know, it's, you know.
Trying to make it as safe as possible for everybody, especially the school kids.
Yeah, yeah, because exactly. And I think, you know, I have all kinds of people, you know, parking around and everything like that. So they gotta walk to school, but you know, you know, if I do my stretch and then the next three people don't, I mean, I've done the whole stretch many times, you know, but.
Yeah, in fact, other people who have done that for many years too.
So, yeah, just, just wondering if you guys, you know, um, would, would, you know, really look into, you know, figuring out what that, you know, I mean, you know, over a certain amount of, you know, an inch snowfall, it's not so bad, but you get a six inch wet, heavy snowfall and and then if, and if it stays there and freezes and thaws, you're never getting through it. So.
Yeah.
This is something that would be.
I was gonna say, there'll be more. I know there's gonna be several conversations about this because I always wanted to push for the twenty four hours. Um, not because I wanna be mean to you or the next person. I'm just thinking if we want the street, the sidewalks clean for kids to go to school, seventy two hours, it, it's a moot point then.
Yeah.
You know, if somebody's gonna wait seventy two hours, kids have already gone to school twice.
Yeah. Well, and, and I, I was given, you know, one time where I was, I was, because they were very consistently one year clearing it. And so I didn't clear it. And then I got charged twenty dollars to clear it. And I'm like, they never cleared it though, you know? But, you know, they said, well, you know, it supposedly was done once. And I'm like, okay, but it's a, you know, the reason I waited was because they, the county, the county plows, uh, generally, they go through twice. They go through one, I mean, well, I mean technically four swipes to get that road done. They come through once just to clear, you know, the lane each way. And then they come, you know, so if it's snowing, they're gonna keep, you know, the lane open. And they come through sometime in a later date and push everything that's on the shoulder where cars are parking up onto there. So where I said, I'm pretty sure what happened is I, I plowed mine. And then they came through and shoved everything that's sitting on the shoulder back up onto my sidewalk. So do I have to do it twice then? You know, because.
So when you say your first, is that highway three then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So.
I, and I haven't gotten back to Darren on it. Cause Darren was gonna talk to the county about how they clean Miss Colmas and County Road Three. So that they won't push it up all the way onto the sidewalk.
Okay.
So that our guys, they would come through then not always right after the plow, but to try and alleviate getting that much snow up onto the sidewalk.
Okay.
So, I, like I say, I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk to Derek. He mentioned that here a month or two ago. I'll follow up with him on that. Um, but yeah, he was gonna talk to the county. So they wouldn't be pushing, you know, go all the way to the edge of the sidewalk and push it all up there. He was gonna ask me if they could stay back so that our trucks could come through and pick up, try to pick up the bulk of it.
Okay.
You may still get some, you know.
Oh, right. But you, you know, if they did the shoulders even with a snow blower and a truck so that it removes some of it rather than plow, you know?
Yeah.
But yeah, it's.
So, but yeah, like I say, it's gonna be a work in progress this year.
Okay.
So, um, bear with us.
Yeah.
And we'll, we'll keep trying to
Because, yeah.
fine tune and improve it, but.
You know, say the snow ends at six o'clock at night. They're not gonna do their final plowing till, you know, middle hours in the morning. Well, I'm gonna go out at seven, eight o'clock at night and clear all my sidewalks. But then, you know, so then my sidewalk's clean until they come and do that right next to it. And I will, you know, so it's like that, that, and that's why I was told by the head of seventy two hours was, you know, for that reason that they said, you know, it was, I don't remember, it was somebody from the, you know, they came in here and talked to them like, well, that's where, you know, wait, wait until at least twenty four hours after until you move any snow down. No sense, you know?
So, yeah, so like I say, and we're gonna have things that we're gonna have to fine tune on too.
But for the trip here, I mean, cause that, that would, that would be a lot that they could, they could, you know, take that. I mean, I helped out with the Lutheran church. It's the exact same scenario. Just saw opposite side of the street where they tried to pull that out of there and it's, it's, it's a, it's a nightmare.
But yeah, I'll get back with Darren on that again because, um, like I said, we did discuss that, that he was gonna talk to that with county and all that.
Alright, thank you.
You bet. Thanks. Um, while we are on the public comment, um, I am wondering if the council would be opposed to eliminating public comment? And anything that wants to come before the council has to be on the agenda.
So what, like the point being so that we have time, a little bit?
We have the time. Yes, yes. You know, if we have the public, if we have the floor open, people are bringing it to us. We're thinking about it, goes on the next agenda. You know, we, now we've spent time at two different meetings where if they put it on the agenda to come before the council, we can probably handle it at one, one swipe.
Well, even research what we need to research as well.
Yes. Yeah.
Is that, like, I know we've kind of gone back and forth with that a couple times since I've been on. Is that kind of how we did it at the beginning?
Um, we've got an open floor for.
Um, we've had open floor for probably the most I think we've reduced it sometimes.
Okay.
We've got open floor, you're not required to have open floor. Um, there's a couple scenarios and, you know, technically, if open floor, somebody could come up there and say anything. You know, you don't have any filter on, they can say anything about you, about me, or whatever, you know, in the past that may have happened, but, um, eliminating it is not saying they can't come, just get on the agenda, give your information, what is it you wanna talk about? Is it something that should be publicly talked about? Um, going about that way, otherwise the other comment, I told Judy is, they could come here, but they have to fill out a form, and then Judy would address them coming up to her the night of, but you're not gonna have any information. That's why we changed it to items for the future consideration, because a lot of people come, you're asking questions, but you don't have any answers for it, because you didn't even know that it was gonna be out there.
It would be more efficient to have them fill out a form, or so at least we know they can, maybe some research, whatever it may be.
I mean, right. The only thing was if you wanna let them agenda, you know, I get all the packets on Wednesday, so they're gonna have to come into my office before Wednesday
Monday?
And say that they, yes.
I was gonna say, I feel
Monday is what I tell everybody else, Monday, the Monday before, and so if they come on Friday, it's like I already did my packet. So, you're not coming to the meeting, because we're not having open floor, you're gonna have to wait till the next Monday, sure.
We couldn't even know what to well, if they were explaining, or even know what to research. It's just gonna say, the liquid bills, I don't know what that means, I don't know what to research. I mean, what are they, are they gonna write a stick turn around? That's, that's about it.
Like, I could have a more condensed, what, what do they want, what information do they want from the council, what
Yeah.
What'll come, or
Maybe even a phone number, just in case we have further questions, or Judy has further questions on hand. As I'm reading this, this is how I feel your question is going.
True.
Yeah, I'm from that.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion from one of my council members if they would be so kind.
I'll make a motion to would you prefer a document filled out?
Um, well, Angela, well, Angela could have the document. Um
I can create a form, I can work with Judy and we can be
Okay. I'll make a motion to
We can like
going forward, not have open floor on our agenda and to have any community member come, fill out a form or arrange with Angela the information prior to our meeting, typically by the Monday prior
Yeah.
to our meeting and give it a try and see what goes.
Sure.
Motion is a made and seconded to, um, eliminate open floor of our agenda. And anything that wants to be brought before the council should be brought to either Judy or Angela one week prior to the council. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Motion carries. Is anyone there?
What if they don't show up to the meeting, you still?
Yes, we can still address the situation.
Okay.
Well, my
It's supposed to be Washington doing it.
I do better.
Yeah?
You know?
Yeah.
So
Some cases, for sure.
Well Alright.
Right, so you're last one on the floor.
Scared us out of it.
Yeah, what's that?
Oh, it doesn't mean
We'll move on to item number one ninety-six fee schedule. Um, we will be adopting the new fee schedule in December of twenty twenty-six. Um please keep reviewing that. Um, any changes, bring to Angela. Or any questions that you have, bring to Angela, your departments are working on um, some different things. If you notice, they've already increased some prices, retained some prices. And I, I know I've been today asking Angela some questions about some of this stuff, so I've been trying to get myself, um, all in tune with all of these different things, because there's a lot of things in here. So. Now she said, some of them have not changed in quite a few years, correct? Four five years?
Yeah, some of them have not, um, we do review it every year. Judy was asking how often, we review it every year, but we don't always change everything every year. Um, I usually look to the departments to try to change things based on the cost that they're seeing out there. Keep it up, but one thing, I like the licensing, all the licensing haven't changed for quite some time, but um plans only, they changed theirs this last year, so that's all changed. Our water stuff gets changed. Our, um, public works, they're changing their fees this year, so work will get changed.
Anybody have any questions for Angela before we move on?
We just upgraded, updated the community center last year, right?
Yeah, we did.
How often with the community centers, right, do you end up not getting back to the damage?
Um, this year, I think it's been four times.
You're gonna have to hundred dollars covered the damage?
Usually usually it's cleaning or some type of damage that's done. Um, we did have one where the refrigerator was damaged, that was more than a hundred dollars, but that was the only
Any further discussion on that? If not, we'll move on to project number three seventy-three, personnel policy. I have looked through that draft again. And I don't know if the rest of you, yeah, I'm satisfied with what we have.
All for new proof?
Second. Motion is remain and seconded to approve personnel policy. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. It only took me eleven months to get it done.
You got it, Angela.
Five years.
Years.
Oh, I'm new, this is project, project number eighty-nine, attorney, uh, both Flattery and Hood and Thornton Law Offices are looking at increasing their rate or rates for the upcoming year?
And we're still satisfied with both of these entities, correct?
Yes.
Perfect. I'll make a motion to approve and accept the rate increase for both Flattery and Hood and Thornton offices.
Okay. Motion is made and seconded to accept the rating base for both Flattery and Hood and Thornton Law Offices for twenty twenty-six, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. More than carries. Moving on to project number ninety-seven, Northland Hill. Um
Do you have, um, oh, she's got a
We have several, several going, going bills for twenty twenty-five in order for Angela to, um, get them added as an assessment.
Yes, and maybe, maybe my, um, information wasn't clear enough, because I didn't see people ask questions, but there are bills that individuals have, either
Um, you guys could, if you're gonna continue to have, it's really hard to hear, sorry. Nope, it's okay, it's just hard to hear.
The bills are like delinquent bills, so either they're water bill, sewer bill, or they have other bills with the city that have been unpaid, so we have the option to put it on their taxes if they live in the community, so what we do each October is go through all our bills that are more than sixty days overdue, and anything that has not been collected for a couple months of billing, then we'll put them on this list, ask them to pay, they have till the end of November. I asked for your approval to put them on, so if they would pay me by the end of November, we will take them off the list, otherwise they do get put on the taxes for twenty-six. We do that each year.
Motion to approve, can someone tell us? Motion has been made and, uh, seconded to approve the unpaid bill for twenty twenty-six tax. Motion is made and seconded to approve applying any unpaid bills to twenty twenty-six taxes, if not paid by November twenty-first. All in figures, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. More than carries. And then, um, the engineering, Angela has added to the agenda for us. Um you'll call, back in May, I believe, it was, Bolling Engineering came up and offered to do a city assessment along with writing a grant for us. That is a grant that we just received, four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. This is the one that they wrote. Um, they came and met with us after approval of that, that grant, and they have asked us if we would be willing to let them look at the the development that we're looking to do when we use that four hundred and eighty thousand. Um, in doing that, they would, um, they would look at doing an assist in initial needs and funding assessment summary for that project, um, on King Street. We have not talked to anyone or or moved forward with any, any contractor, uh, at, or engineer at this point. So I don't know if you guys would be willing to let them take the lead on that project just to see what they can do for us. According to the, the, um, presentation they gave us earlier this year, part of their organization has a grant writing division, and that's all they do, is they'll look for grants for the cities that they work for on projects that they're, they're working on. So it was their contention that they may be able to get us more grant money for that project. But I would need to know your guys' feelings on letting them have a chance to do that.
Anything to help us with the money, I think we can shots, you know? I would have a little bit, uh, a chance before, because we're kind of locked us in, I like that part of it, but since this is a set piece.
And this is only for that property?
Only for the project. Only like so, the grant writers, I'll just give it, uh, may, it may or may not, not on potential, may or may not, it's not some of our examples, it may have kind of reputation, but pretty good, or the numbers, you could
I, I, I I was gonna say, and, um, they did that grant writing for nothing to, I mean, they, they were, stayed us right five thousand dollars recovery rate on the top.
Well, and to be clear, I think what they're asking for is task order number one, is do this needs assessment, which would be review funding and review the infrastructure needs.
Yeah.
And that would be something they would do. Now, the, the next step would be if you wanted to have them do the project, that would be the next task per se.
Yeah.
Or you could have WSB and them both give a bid or request for proposals to do the project and see if either one of them does it, but still, the option is still the council's of all you want to see.
Which is what I heard the first presentation, kind of locked in there, I did like
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And this is pretty specific what they, what they're willing to do right now?
Yeah.
I'm making motion, um, move forward with cast coming. Yes, all right.
That's okay.
Motion has been made and seconded to move forward with cast board and everyone with Bolling Engineering. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. More than carries. In the last order of business, oh, does anyone have anything else that they would like to bring up before I put the last order of business? Uh, tomorrow was Veterans Day, and I have, um, I would like to, um, put up a may, mayoral Veterans Day proclamation. Whereas millions of American men and women have answered the call to duty in defending the hard-wonned freedoms we enjoy today, and whereas November eleventh, Veterans Day is the occasion on which we remember, recognize, and honor the unselfish service in all wars and military actions of our veterans, and therefore, I, Judy Corack, Mayor of the City of Osakis, Minnesota, ask all citizens of the greater Osakis area to join with me in this very special observance of Veterans Day. Let us recognize the hardships and sacrifices of those we know as veterans, and let us give them a special recognition. So tomorrow, I know they're having a service or or program or something up at the school, um, for for Veterans Day, and if you see a vet, thank them. Are you a vet? Thank you for your service.
Mr. Anderson, if you want. Thank you. Did you pull this off earlier?
No.
Adam's in the wrong spot or something, I was confused about that.
I thought that's what you wanted to buy your own earlier.
Well
We've been allowed to do the
The swearing, um, generally corner, tell them any questions.
I just moved it to the back, if there's any woman, it's not more.
Yeah.
I'll talk more about it, and then it's harder, I'm like
No, that's great.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded, put here, all in favor, say aye. Aye, and opposed, same thing. We're out of here.